Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, council, you received the minutes from the September 28 meeting. Comments or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes submitted. Sorry about that.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
You also receive current expenses. No questions, motion? The Blue River Technologies.
Those are de-watering bags for the wastewater treatment plant. Some new things we're trying there to get our solids to a drier state because we pay when we dispose, halt out, we pay by moisture content. So with these, we're hoping to get a better dry content, save us money.
Make a motion to approve the expenses submitted.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have Rock Mill with us again this evening. Ms. Davis. Everybody else?
Don't forget to counsel me.
All right, leave the floor.
Thank you, yes, we're back. As you recall, the last time I spoke with all of you, it was kind of layout, distinctions between an income tax and a property tax, and kind of show you what the pros and cons of each one of those are, and we're going to review it briefly tonight, but now that we've got some actual project estimates from your administrators, basically, I wanted to lay out for you essentially what our recommendation is, as well as, you know, next steps, what you need to decide in terms of how to move forward with your potential ballot initiative. So, looking at page one, this is again part of the review, in identifying the needs of the village from the retreat and from other research and analysis, you settled on the village services center, which includes police station, administrative offices and services, maintenance, council chambers, utility. There are a number of other needs of the village that have been identified, from park improvements to street tape improvements, roadway paving, potential water sewer line and other capital improvements, as well as ongoing other capital needs looking into the future. The initial estimate is approximately $3.7 million for the village services center, and so that's kind of what we're using, looking into our recommendation or analysis in terms of cost of income tax versus property tax for your ballot initiative. Again, just a little recap of how the money is raised. You have essentially three options, or a combination of options, income tax, property tax, and a bond issue. And the bond issue, again, is the least flexible because you can basically put that on there for one purpose, and that purpose at this point would be the village services center, and then beyond that, you would only be collecting taxes for the debt service on the service center. So it's kind of pigeonholed into one particular purpose with that. Moving on to page two, some of the pros and cons of income tax versus property tax. The income tax will capture revenues from taxpayers other than residents. Some local governments are able to capitalize on this more than others. You may or may not have a lot of folks coming into Plain City to work that live in other places, but to the extent that that happens, you would be able to capture some benefit of them sharing in the cost of, you know, infrastructure improvements. So from that extent, it's less expensive, and from just the math standpoint, we'll get into that here in a little bit, but it is less expensive on your residents, looking at the math from a standpoint of median household income and median home value, making that comparison, it's less expensive compared to property tax. The amount of tax the individual pays is basically based on your income, so, you know, those who make more would pay more, kind of self-explanatory. One thing that's unique, not completely unique to income tax, is that it will grow with the wealth of the population. So for example, when you compare the income tax to a property tax, if you get appreciated value in your home or property value, the village kind of rolls back and you collect what you collect, and if there's new construction, you might get some gain off of that. But with an income tax, anytime there's additional wealth within the village or, you know, increased incomes, you're going to gain the benefit of that year over year. The use of revenues is more flexible, and this we'll get into, but this is also part of the analysis of what you can put on the ballot, and what the Ohio Revised Code allows for, and how you actually go through the mechanics of getting that on the ballot. But the use of an income tax is more flexible, and you'll find that the use of the property tax is a little less flexible. Cons of the income tax, it is subject to economic cycles. Obviously, everybody saw the large impact of that back when we went through the Great Recession. Hopefully, that's not something that's going to happen again in my lifetime anyways, but you basically never know. So, an income tax is subject to any kind of downturn in an economic cycle. Property tax pros, again, it's kind of the flip side to the economic cycle thing, that you could see some volatility in income tax, whereas with property tax, the property assessed valuations are typically a little bit more stable over time, so you do have that more predictability than you get in the income tax. And as I just mentioned a little bit ago, it does grow with new construction, so you are able to capitalize a little bit on growth factors from new construction, but not quite to the extent that you would see with an income tax. Cons of the property tax, it's, and we'll get into the math again, but it's going to be more expensive on the basis of the Census Bureau's median home value and median household income. Not quite as productive as an income tax, that's in reference, again, to the growth and sense valuation versus wealth, and it, you will find, is a little bit less flexible when you're trying to put an issue on the ballot to extend an offer to the voters. Moving on to page three, this is the cost analysis. So again, to recap, the services center, which is kind of what we're focusing right on right now, is approximately $3.7 million, and there will be additional ongoing capital needs, you know, potential operating needs that the village will have to take into account, and those estimates for additional improvements, capital needs, and this is where we get into our, you know, Rock Mill sort of minimum recommendation. We're looking at estimated revenues of about, looking at the left-hand side of the chart here, $455,000 a year, and that's the sort of bare minimum that we think that you're going to need in order to pay for the debt service, as well as provide for ongoing capital needs and some other operational and services costs moving forward. The additional number we're looking at is about a half a percent, so going from left to right, estimated revenue is of $455,000, is an equivalent income tax of about .35%, which is an equivalent property tax millage of just under six mills, and breaking down the math, that basically comes to about a little over $15 a month for an income tax, and again, it's based on the median household income from the Census Bureau's most recent statistics. Or an estimated monthly property tax, breaking it down in a month of a little over $31 a month for the median home value, based on the most recent census statistics. Looking at the more flexible range, looking at a half percent income tax, the equivalent is 8.56 mills in property tax, and that's going to give you more operating flexibility to look to the future for your future capital needs, and, you know, still obviously pay for the debt service on the village service center. In monthly costs, that's about $21.62 based on median household income, and about $536.39 based on median home value. Any questions with the numbers thus far? And just to give you an idea, if you want to look at this in terms of per $100,000 value for a home with this millage, six mills, it's about $210 a year, and the 8.56 mills is about $300 a year for a $100,000. So then, other things we need to make note of when making a final decision as to what exactly the village is going to offer the residents in terms of ballot. I have it broken down into basically two pages here. The first one is the municipal income tax levy. Obviously, because you're requesting a percentage in excess of the 1%, it does require an ordinance and a resolution, and a vote of the taxpayers. The flexibility comes into play for an income tax because of the purpose clause that will actually be on the ballot, and there's some sample ballot language there that you can read through, I don't need to recite, but essentially, it allows you to just generally issue the income tax for general operating, maintenance, capital improvements, equipment, in sort of a generalized statement. And juxtaposed to that is the next page, where you're looking at the property tax levy. Again, vote of the people required. The purpose clause must be selected from purposes, and this is, after speaking with bond counsel, and kind of getting a little bit of an education, and Paul, you may be able to, like, elaborate on some of this, but within the Revised Code for property taxes, this is something that's kind of been in play. To give you an example, the federal income tax has been around for roughly 100 years. Property tax law in Ohio has been around in building, building, building for approximately 200 years. So with the property taxes, each one of these different layers and nuances gets kind of tossed in, so that at this point, it's a little bit less flexible in terms of asking the voters for both general operating dollars, as well as capital improvement dollars. It would essentially require you to put two ballot issues on there to get two separate things covered. There are some things provided for in the Ohio Revised Code, such as police stations or fire stations, that does provide for you to have one ask at the ballot, and you can build a fire station, or you can build a police station, and it'll provide for your full-time and part-time, even volunteer employees, as well as the operations of the facilities and the capital improvements and capital equipment that's associated with that. But there is currently nothing in the Ohio Revised Code for a village services center or a town hall or something to that effect. So just knowing that to get the sort of generalized dollars that you can get with an income tax, it would require putting multiple issues simultaneously on the ballot for property tax. Any questions with that? One of the other variables with the property taxes, since this would obviously be a new property tax, there is no longer a 10% and 2.5% rollback exemption that apply to new property taxes going forward, so that's an additional cost that we pass on to your residents on the property tax side. Again, there's some sample ballot language down here, provided by bond counsel, and again, you just insert the purpose clause, and there's, I mean, the purpose clauses within the property tax ranges from A to double Y, so it's nearly, you know, it's over 50 items at this point, I think. So, that's kind of all the details laid out as to what you folks need to kind of discuss and decide what best to do moving forward, in terms of what works best for the village, what works best for the residents, and at this point, moving forward, you need to decide on what that final ballot issue is going to be, but it does require, again, if it's the income tax, it's going to require the authorization is... Yeah, it requires both an ordinance and a resolution, and Paul can elaborate on this, but the distinction is that you really, really need to focus on the time you have between now and December 16th is the deadline to basically have this certified with the Board of Elections, but with any potential referendum, or the number of readings and that sort of thing, it's kind of crunch time, so you need to get it right from now moving forward in terms of asking the questions you need to ask of yourselves and of bond counsel, and making sure that you have all your ducks in a row to hit your deadline if you want to be on the march ballot. Any questions?
How long would it be for? How long would this, say, the service thing, for how many years, or does it go on forever, or?
Well, if you were to do just a property tax for the building itself, if it was a bond issue, then it would be to the extent that you want to issue the bond. So it could be for a maximum term of 20 years or 30 years, depends on the useful life of the capital improvements, but with other property taxes for general purposes, such as operations, or for future capital needs and that sort of thing, it can go, it can be ongoing. You can set the number of years, excuse me, you can set it for basically whatever years you want, or you can set it for continuing, and the income tax is pretty much the same way.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Counsel, I don't know, do you want to add this to your agenda tomorrow night?
I was going to suggest that.
Okay.
The only thing I would just add is to do the timeframe, if this were to pass, we would have to do it as an emergency. Obviously, we don't have time for three readings or a referendum.
Right, and just again, reiterate, conversation is with bond counsel, just, you know, to make sure that that's all, all your ducks in a row, and if it's done by emergency, then it's not going to have any other wrinkles in there between now and when your final authorization is complete.
All right, we have a couple people that would like to address counsel, Mr. Gall.
Yeah, I'd like to know if it's possible we can put the Porta-Johns in a different location next year, so I don't have to sit on my deck and look at them every time I go out the house, along with the other four neighbors that live on my street. I'd like for you to consider that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Medici.
Let's at least paint them, put flowers on them or something.
I thought you were going to say you were downwind of them or something.
I don't sit out there because of that, so I don't have to look at them.
I am bringing you an update. My discussions with Frontier. It's been a while, I've been waiting for things to settle down in here before I bring this up. You know, I've been here multiple times, I've spoken to several of you on several occasions. We're going on two years. I can't get those guys to move the wires. I can't do the masonry work on the building, I can't paint it, I can't fix it, they're running the main trunk line under the eaves to my building. It's unconscionable, and now they want almost $9,000 to move those wires. I mean, I'm so mad I'm having a hard time keeping calm when I think about these guys. Now, these guys are a bad neighbor. Last time I came in before you, I, there were also cable lines there. I want to give credit where credit is due. I called Time Warner, within one week, their engineer met me, we walked around, we found an alternate route, and two weeks later, they were gone. The guys were professional, less than a month, boom, fixed. That's a good neighbor. These particular guys, they're not listening to you, and they're not listening to me, and you're looking at one of the only people willing to dump several hundred thousand dollars in one of your downtown buildings, and I can't fix it because those wires need to go. It's not right. It's just not right. Now, I don't know what I have to do to get people's attention. The last time I stood in front of you, oh yeah, well, you know, we're going to check into it. Well, it's been almost a year. Look at the date on that piece of paper. The wires are still there, nothing's changed, I still can't fix the building. Just horribly upset about it, but I've been patiently waiting until I read in the newspaper what you guys were talking about last time you met, and I just about pocked. It's a good thing I've had two weeks to wait. I am so disappointed in every, every aspect of what's going on here. And now I hear you're sitting here and talking about you want to bleed your residents more with taxes for a building without data. How much does it cost right this minute to operate all your different facilities in comparison to the debt service and the principal on the loan that you want for a new building? You guys discuss these financial matters, and it would be great, don't get me wrong, it would be fantastic if you had a new facility, but without the data, this is what it costs now, this is what it's going to cost with a new facility. If you don't have that data, you got nothing. You got nothing but a faction. You got somebody that's bulldozing everyone else trying to get their idea through. I don't know how many of you have read Federalist Number 10, This Country Was Founded, using that document, which is based on Plato's Republic. Both of those documents describe how you screw up a council like this. If you haven't read it, you should, because that describes in a huge amount of detail how a stupid idea grows and grows and grows and gets pushed down the pike, and everyone kicks the can, and next thing you know, oh crap, well, how are we going to come up with this much money? It disturbs me. And I, again, I didn't even know about this till just now, because I don't come to these regular meetings. The last time I saw a financial decision made by this body, it had to do with a bucket truck. You needed a new bucket truck. It was in horrible shape. Some of you, I know Leslie said, what's, how often do we need it? Because we could check into renting until we're on better financial footing, and then we can actually buy one. And I thought, that was fantastic, you know, and some of you agree with that. Well, how much, you know, how often do we need it? Question goes to your village administrator. Well, how often do you need it? Well, we just need it. You know, you don't just need it, you need data. You need to know how many times a year is it used, so you can tell how much it would cost to rent it. I mean, long-term, yes, you need your own bucket truck. Long-term, yes, you need your own facility, but without the data of what is your current expenditure versus what it's going to be, you are wasting everyone's time, and I'll tell you, you're pissing your residents off, because I'm mad. You guys want to open up my wallet and take money from me and my family and everyone else? If you need it, I'd be the first one to give it to you. I donated to the clock, I've done everything, I've helped everyone out I can possibly help out. I'm willing to give you the money, but if you guys put something on this ballot without that data, there's going to be a big sign in front of my building, right in the middle of your downtown, saying, "Do not vote for this crap." Okay? I just, I'm horrified. I, obviously, you can tell I'm upset. And then I read, Mr. Kennedy says, "Well, we don't want to make any financial decisions until we hear back from our residents." Well, I'm here, I'm your resident, you don't have to go hunting me down. I have a list. Number one, I want those wires moved, as previously stated.
Eric, can I ask you, do you think the village should move those?
No, I think you should put pressure on the responsible party. Last time I came in, I brought photographs, and they said...
And we met with them, and you...
Yeah?
We can't force them to be responsible. We can try again, though.
I can come out to this venue every two weeks with new photographs. Last time I came with photographs, they actually fixed some of the open wires hanging around. Well, I came with information for you to feed to them. Mechanic Street, I just happened to be on Mechanic Street. There are wires, I can reach up and literally grab the entire bundle with my hand, okay? I reach eight feet tall, that's seven and a half feet up. My service vans are eight foot six, and they have ladder racks on them. You tell me what's going to happen when I drive my service truck down that, if one of the residents on that street has a furnace go out this winter, I'm going to go pulling in there in a service truck, it's going to hook that wire, and it's going to pull those high voltage telephone poles down on your residents. Will it cause a fire? Will it kill somebody? This is a liability issue. I'm telling you, I can go around this town and I can just take photographs, I'll come in here, I'll bet you with 500 photographs, and you can, if that's what it takes to get Frontier to actually wake up and do something, I'm willing to do it, because honestly, if this doesn't get fixed soon, that's what I'm going to do. You're going to see me every two weeks, and I'm going to have new photographs. Mechanic Street, it's ridiculous. There is no, no way on earth, anyone here who was a teenage kid, he'd be swinging on those. It's a liability issue. The city, now you know about it, now you're on notice, now council knows about it, you're better get it fixed. Sewer laterals. I had sewer backed up in my building, and that was pretty fun. I had a camera brought out, verified where the problem was, and it was on city property. Lo and behold, wasn't on my property. So, I get your village administrator out, and he comes out, he says, "Well, you know, that's your line that goes out somewhere to the middle of the street, we don't know where the lines even are. We don't even know where it exits your building, we don't have any records." Okay, it's an old building, I understand that. And so I asked him when they were going to come in and fix it, because I have tenants who need their bathroom. And he said, "Well, I don't know, I need to speak to the attorney." Why on earth this village would need to go talk to an attorney before they figure out whether they're going to help me with a sewer problem or not, is beyond my comprehension. And then I find out that you guys passed an ordinance sometime way 20, 30 years back, where the entire sewer lateral, all the way out to your main, is a responsibility of your, whoever's building, whoever, property owner. It is. Now, you've got to think about this, that's a liability issue. I can't imagine that you guys thought that through, not you, obviously, but the previous council, I can't imagine that that was thought through, because that main line's eight feet down. OSHA has regulations, if you're in a trench over five feet, someone could get killed down there. What are you going to do when that's a homeowner's house, and he's out there trying to fix it himself, because he doesn't have money to spend thousands of dollars to have someone else fix it? You're going to get someone killed. And you know what the most amazing thing is? I paid it, I paid the money, I had it fixed, I didn't have a choice. Somebody set a brick on top of the cleanout, it was an open pipe, they set a brick on it and then paved over it. That's a city employee doing that. That is not a building owner setting a brick over a four-inch hole. So over the years, all the rocks just kind of fell in, and it eventually bugged the pipe. So, I'm pissed about that. You as council, you want something to add to your list, take responsibility for your sewer laterals, because every other community around here does except this one. Marysville, as soon as it hits that property line and it's on city property, they take responsibility for it and they fix it. That's my two cents on that. And if you want to know actually where that sewer line goes, because you have no maps, you don't know where any sewer lines are, if you actually want to know where it goes, you're going to cost, it's going to cost you the $2,000 I spent to fix that line, because you guys didn't even have the decency to have a city employee out there to see where it went. That's unconscionable. Didn't cost them any money to have someone stand out there and see which way the sewer line went, and improve your maps, instead of just throwing your hands up and answering, "We don't know where it is, it's old." Well, yeah, it's old, and here it was open, and you had a perfect example, the perfect chance to map it, get it put on your maps, and then you would never have this problem again. Nobody took the time to do that. I've been stewing about this, as you can see, while I'm up here. Water fees. You know, there are all these new products out there. You've got low-flow toilets, low-flow this, low-flow that, low-flow showerheads. Save water. Fantastic idea. You guys bill the same amount for the first 600 gallons that everyone uses. Why would anybody put a low-flow anything in their house? It's not, they're not going to save a dime, and then you put a $10 surcharge on top of it. That's just like a kick in the teeth. So, if I know I'm getting billed for 600 gallons, well, hell, I'm going to wash my car twice a week. Why would you wash your car once a week? Why would you not wash your car? You're going to get billed anyway. Put that on your list. Who's enforcing the new maintenance code? Finally went through zoning. There are windows across the street, been out for a year and a half, two years. In fact, the last time I was in this council was almost a year ago, and you had sent a letter to property owners. Now, it's a big piece of styrofoam wedged in the window to keep the bats and birds and everything else out, but the window next to it, the storm window, is fractured on three sides, and it's above the staircase, so when that pane of glass falls out, lands on those stairs, it's going to come shooting down right towards the sidewalk and clip somebody in the leg. It's been there for years. You guys have known about it, you've sent this guy letters. It's not fixed, what is going on? Nobody is going to pay attention to your maintenance code if you don't enforce it. And by the way, I can't do my bit to honor the maintenance code, because I can't get the wires... the wires out of the way to paint the building. As you can tell, I'm mad. Feel free to call me if you need any more information. I hope I don't have to keep coming back here every week, but if those lines don't come off the side of my building, I'm going to be here every two weeks with new photographs of the horrible wiring around this town. And maybe it'll put enough pressure on them to fix it. Because now I'm mad. It's going to be my duty to come in here. Nothing personal against any of you. I'm sorry to have to yell at you. I'm just yelling because I'm mad. Okay?
Can I respond just to give you a little more information, Eric? I think Rock Mill, the example that you got today for the Village Services Center was just one of many things that we were looking at spending the money on, that we determined may be a priority for the levy if it passes. One of the things that we included in the priorities was the water, sewer line infrastructure. We know that's an issue. We looked at roadway paving, downtown improvements. They recommended, I think, nine additional staff members. Obviously, we can't do that. But village service, I think you got perhaps a misrepresentation today that that was the focus of where we were spending the potential levy money. That was just one of many things that we were looking at. That was not the focus of the levy, not at all. And we are doing a cost analysis as to whether or not that would be worth it and whether that would save anyone in the long run. So that may ultimately not even take place if the levy were to pass. So that is not the focus of the levy.
So you already have the data then showing?
We're in the process of doing that, whether that would. Today is the first day we found out it will cost $3.7 million. We're in the process of getting our information together, how much we spend on all these different buildings and how much it costs, the heat, cool, electricity, all of those things. Obviously, they're inefficient. We're trying to figure all of that out. So come time, if it obviously is not cost-effective to do that, we would not do that. But yes, we're in the process. We, I think we talked to, we talked to Mr. Vaughn a while ago, two weeks ago, I think it was. So we're aware of making sure that that decision is an intelligent one before we go dropping $3.7 million on a service center. I don't know what a $3.7 million service center would look like. I don't know if we could get one for less. We don't know it. It was just one of the list of many things that we were looking at as a could-be priority and a way to save money for the village and improve the village. So that's not, I just wanted to make sure. It seemed to me that your view of the levy was that it was just for this village services center, and that's not at all remotely true. I appreciate your comment.
You should have the data already. This discussion's been going on. I've been reading it in about papers. I've been hearing about it. You should have that data already about what you're currently spending. You should be able to look at what's sitting in front of you right now and you should have a decision made in your mind already, because you should have already had that data. Are you going to sell every other old building that you have? You're going to build a new services center and you're going to sell every one of them? Because if you don't, you're still going to be heating them, you're still going to be cooling them, or you're going to end up with mold, you're going to end up with blown pipes. You're going to have to get rid of all of those structures. So you can't say, "Well, this is what we currently spend and this is what we would spend." You have to say, "This is what we would spend plus all of those buildings." I can tell you over a beer and a pizza how that math is going to land. You don't have to hire high-dollar consultant. I can tell you that unless you remove all of those structures, that math does not work. I'm good enough at math to know that. It does not work. And if you come to all of us asking for us to pay for it, you're going to have a problem.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate your frustration. I'd like to bring up, if you remember, we brought in Chris Miller from Ice Miller last year. We were talking about the holes in the wires. Do you know, are there any other, well, you spoke of Mechanic Street and his situation. I'm sure there's other situations and we're not getting anywhere on our own. Should we bring him back maybe to help with this situation and see what we can get done? Do you remember him coming in? We were talking about utility right-aways and the downtown poles and the wires and...
Was that $20,000?
I think so. I think so.
I think that's a fine idea to piggyback that. What, do we, we give Frontier like the rights to the area. That's how it works, right? Like, we actually enter in a contract with Frontier. We have leverage over Frontier to basically say, "When we go to renew this contract, if this is how you treat our village citizens, then we won't renew the contract." Don't we?
I don't know. We did meet with them. We did meet with the general, I don't know, regional manager or something.
Frontier?
Yeah. And do you want to speak to them? Do you remember that conversation? We don't really write, give them that.
Okay, so how does that work?
I think, I know that we could, according to that guy. Remember that conversation?
They, Frontier leases from the power company. They hang their wires on the power poles. So it would ultimately be, I'm not sure exactly if the power company have authority to make them correct Mr. Middich's situation, but they have permission to hang on the electric poles.
So we give the electric company permission to put the poles on our power poles. So we have leverage over the electric company.
What about hooked to the building? Is it hooked to the building, not to the pole?
I think we can if we go the direction like Mrs. Perkins had mentioned.
Right, I think if we try it on our own, I don't think there's...
Yeah, because they obviously aren't listing to us, they're not listing to him. I think maybe it wouldn't even be $20,000, maybe it would just be $5,000 and we could get him to come in and write a letter or use the correct verbiage, the law, which we do not know. I mean, I'd be happy to call him again and just see what he thinks. I don't think a phone call would cost anything. What do you think, Paul? Do you, you have an opinion on this?
No, that's fine. I mean, I think what we were talking about before is utilizing, and I think that was, the reason we were talking to Chris Miller before was because we were talking about some of the downtown changes, the overall landscape of downtown, moving power lines off of the downtown streets and putting them in the back alley so that it's less visible and less obstruction. And in something more comprehensive like that, I think that they, that there is incentive for them to be involved. So probably would be, it wouldn't have hurt to contact Mr. Miller and see what I can...
Is there power, is there power mined on yours or is it just Frontier lines?
These don't even test connect building. They run under the eaves, the full length of the building, and then they go out the back down to the post office. Don't even go to the building. My service comes from the back, then they go to my building. And I have, I tried that tact.
Do we have something in property or not making it this turn that we say...
We don't have any control over that because it's their easement. They own the easement that it's just because it's an older village and the way it was constructed and the way that these easements were lined up, that, that part of the building falls within easement. That doesn't mean it makes it right, but that's part of the issue.
Well, easements are contracted. We look at whether there's a, the way we drafted that easement, I know it was many years ago. Whether there's an out, if it doesn't satisfy, if there's some portion of what it's doing or creates a problem within the, and is there some kind of general, we can get out clause because it's...
But we also have other issues. You know, Chris talked about Mechanic Street. I'm sure he probably can give me a list of other places that might have the same problem where people aren't complaining yet.
I just thought I'd let you know in case you do speak to the power company. I tried that before I came back here to talk to you. And I spent days and days chasing my tail, talking to the power company. They don't care.
Right.
So, just so you know, I've already contacted them.
Right. What we're speaking of, I don't remember, but, oh, it was early last year. We had an attorney come in. His name is Chris Miller with the firm Ice Miller. And they specialize in, in easements and power lines and, and that was when we were talking about the downtown landscape. And he was telling us how easements work and what our rights are and, and how he could help us. So that's what I was thinking, if he could step in and help us with what we can do and so forth. I'm sure Ryan probably recorded that meeting maybe. Do you remember? It might be on YouTube where he's...
I probably did. Give me a date and I can look it up.
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll find out.
Yeah, let me know. I can get it to you.
But since we have many issues and we're not getting anywhere with Frontier, that might be...
So why don't you call them?
I'll be happy to. I'll be happy to.
Frontier told me to lean my ladder on the wires. Honestly, they said, they said, "Just lean your ladder on the wires. We do it all the time." That's a liability issue, because that wire is over village property. Somebody does that, falls off that ladder, you guys will get sued, because they're going to land on your property. So, I mean, this is a, this is a bigger deal than...
Right. I understand. And I have been concerned about the others, too. If you just stand downtown and look at some of them, they go nowhere.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think the contact should be made by Kevin and Paul, not council member.
Okay, that's fine. I think Paul's looking at an email.
Yeah, I know Chris.
Okay, very good. Okay. Moving on. Reports. I'll be attending the Plain City Business Association this week. Union County Chamber Board meeting is also this week. And then following that, we're meeting with, Kevin and I are meeting with Union County Chamber in Economic Development and a restaurateur, talking about possibly coming into Plain City. Work session tomorrow night.
Just don't wait under.
Have been scheduled for root canal, so I'm afraid I won't make it. And another thing with that is that I don't think staff were included on the emails that went around, so they weren't expecting to be there.
Oh, I thought, I thought the chief was, because he talked about quality, shooting qualifications.
I think literally you'd say something, Renee copied me or something at the, at the last minute. I'd already had... Oh, I'm sorry.
She's not available.
Yeah, you said you weren't available.
Yeah. If someone could record.
We can reschedule. What's everyone's?
It's your pleasure.
I really think we ought to reschedule. We, there's a lot of important things to discuss. I hate to do it incrementally. It's best that we get all the, all the people together and we can have some intelligent discussions and hopefully reach new decisions.
We have everyone here. Let's just make a date.
Next Tuesday?
We were looking at the meeting that day, but that was, that was important for everyone, so it's, I'm available next Tuesday.
Wednesday is, I don't know.
Like Tuesday the 20th?
I'm, I'm good, but there's...
Monday the 19th?
What about Monday?
Monday the 19th? Can you do Monday, Jim? That's not your zebra night, is it?
No, I'm just thinking the way that when you get this bomb song, we got to get all the bosses.
Can we do seven? My daughter's, the bodily bomb team and that would be their final championship on Monday. But I think I should be able to make the seven, or seven o'clock. Is that okay? I need the centers.
Monday the 19th at seven.
We're canceling or not?
Yes. Is that okay?
Just doing regular council chambers or...
30, Ryan.
21.
7.
Kevin, Jim. Kevin, Dave.
And Renee. Renee, you're invited this time.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'll, I'll send an email to Mr. Rucker. I think we were going to invite him. I'll take care of that this evening.
Did you have anything else?
Me? Oh, no.
All right, Renee.
The only thing I have, I put in your, Ben's, the monthly report. If you have any questions, just let me know. If she's over in council chambers and...
Stop by, pick up your report. And I forgot to add that resident Mark Bennett has agreed to be on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, so we've added him to that list.
Oh, yes, I guess I did send out today the draft charter for the levy committee and the draft charter for the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Given that that was, first I've ever done such, please feel free to look at it with a critical eye.
So that can be on Monday's agenda as well?
Sure.
And I would say if feedback can be given to you prior to that, that would be most helpful.
Yeah, in fact, if you want to do that, then I can come with a file.
All right. Mr. Vaughn?
Our new website is, our new website is launched. Aside from it being a little bit more visually appealing, it is much easier on the backside for staff to make quick changes, additions, deletions. And I want to thank Ingo. She's been really working on that since she's gotten here and she built that from the ground up, literally. And it looks fantastic. Also, leave pickup will begin October 19th and hydrant flushing will be the week of October 26th. And we're just finishing up, hopefully tomorrow, we'll finish up the repairs on the roadside on West Avenue. The former Gingrich property, if you know where that's at, the small parcel plane that the village owns there. This was needed due to, we're losing the road into that ditch and we needed to build a berm up there a little bit and also in anticipation of 2016 to plan and pave that property and give that a bit of a time to settle on that berm. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Hi, David. Attended the Union County Advisor Board meeting concerning the PD March radios. Officer Philip Greenbaum attended human trafficking training, or human trafficking training and then TASER instructor training also. St. Joseph Church has applied for an F2 liquor permit for their fundings in November, as they do every year. One of the PD cruisers was backed into while it was parked in the parking lot of the PD, causing a couple thousand dollars' worth of damage. The suspect left the scene in a pickup truck, but the video from the parking lot captured the truck and we were able to locate the truck later on. And the driver was issued a citation and we're working with the insurance company right now to pay for that. The police department is currently seeking a grant to purchase new body cameras and also vehicle cameras, this one slash one. It's about a $12,000 grant. We're usually pretty good with this grant. We usually get it. Then also the PD's fire room qualifications are scheduled for today and tomorrow night. And that's all I have.
Mr. Hocken?
I've been working with Renee and Kevin with regarding the resolutions that we have pending and apparently the draft and also with the chief. Also, we drafted the social media policy some time ago and I think we're recirculating and I'd ask everybody to take a look at it. Give me your thoughts on it. You know, essentially, the social media policy is not, how should I say it? Everybody would review it and if they want to sign off on it, they would sign off on it. It is not something that, how should I say? It's not enforceable. There's not a statute out there that says if you violated the social media policy, you're somehow going to be sanctioned as a council member. It's really more than, more than anything to pledge, to be responsible and simply that. So I, I ask you all to take a look at it. You know, it was, I put it together kind of in a combination of looking at existing Ohio law, looking at some sample ordinances or policies from other jurisdictions, kind of cobbled it all together. So I take no pride in authorship. If anybody wants any changes to it, feel free to suggest them. One last thing that I would also bring up, and I don't think that we've done this, and I know you've got a work session coming up. I would recommend that for each of our committees, that we need to identify, we need to, for each committee to have a kind of a policy for that committee, to identify, you know, to have a kind of a policy for that committee, to identify, you know, at least a mission statement for that committee or at least some guidance system of what that committee's for. Granted, some of them are pretty self-explanatory. But we also need to identify membership, how people are members, how long they're on for, you know, as members of different committees. I mean, I think this has gone on, I know it's an issue, but it kind of crept into my mind the other day. I think when we're talking about, you know, different committees, that we were talking about adding members and everything. And to me, I don't think that there's ever been any guidance as to how many people go on a committee and who, how they get on. I think we need to have a little bit of organization with that. So I don't want to necessarily add to probably a very busy agenda for the work session, but I would at least suggest that to every, any council member that is the point of contact or the liaison to any various committees, that we work on, and certainly like you and I can talk of planning and zoning, about having, and planning and zoning is set up by ordinance, but if we're talking parks committee or some other committees like that, that we need to have some identification as to how people get, become members, how many members should be on there, and a little bit of guidance for each of these committees. So I recommend doing that. Otherwise, that's about all I have.
Great, thank you. All right, BCA?
Nothing to report.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing, we'll be only twenty-first.
Kirk?
We are still attempting to, we've had a couple dates fall through, so we're still attempting to have our next meeting to discuss what we discussed last time. I did have something about the parks to bring up, though. I understand that there's a donation of thirty trees or so for the park. This is not my idea, so no one needs to tell inch me. But someone pointed out to me that some of the large trees in our parks may be worth actually quite a bit of money. That there may be, so I'm just throwing that out there, is there any interest to actually finding out what some of those trees are worth? Maybe one or two could actually pay for a restroom. I know that wouldn't cut, that trees are the best part of that park, I would be the first one to say that. But if it's a process of cutting one or two down, replanting thirty, that's a good trade, especially depending on where that tree's located and how often it's used and enjoyed. But just something to look at, I don't know, I mean, if those trees are worth fifteen or twenty...
If you read the original part D, it says right in there, no trees are to be cut.
All right, well, scratch that.
I have, I have it with me, I'll show you.
No, I, I'm not arguing with Adam. I said I don't believe you, I, again, it was just a resident idea and I thought I would throw that out there because...
Well, I mean, yeah, if a storm takes, some where they're diseased, that's different. But, you know, a beautiful big old oak that's perfectly healthy standing there, yeah.
I agree.
That's what our administration says.
Okay. Personnel finance, do we?
Nothing. Wait, no. The vote.
Fine.
What may they go on this week because two of the members of the law, two of the trustees is gone, and so we didn't really do very much.
Thank you. All right, council, we're in a whole business. Third reading of ordinance four fifteen, surcharge amendment.
Motion to approve the third reading of four fifteen.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Third reading of Resolution twenty-one fifteen, the police appropriation amendment.
Motion to approve the third reading of Resolution twenty-one fifteen. Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And the third reading of Resolution twenty-two fifteen, the street appropriation amendment. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay, so we have several items on the new business. First one. Resolution approving dash T. Resolution approving temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village through March thirty-one of two thousand sixteen, Resolution twenty-three fifteen.
I did denote to Renee that the change to the date of the date two thousand sixteen is...
In section one, yes, it says twenty fifteen, it should be twenty sixteen, we may not change.
And so to be clear, this doesn't include that percentage we discussed for parks.
Correct.
I want to make a motion to approve twenty-three fifteen.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Five fifteen. All right, this is an ordinance providing for the staffing, organization, and chain of command of the Plain City Police Department and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance five fifteen. Motion to approve ordinance five fifteen, second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, Resolution twenty-four fifteen, a resolution to establish the compensation of the position of chief police, its status as an exempt executive or administrative position. Twenty-four fifteen. It's partly lieutenant's position.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve twenty-four fifteen.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And Resolution twenty-five fifteen, a resolution to adjust the salaries, hours, and/or method of compensation of the officers and employees of the Plain City Police Department.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-five fifteen.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
abstain.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, so tree donation.
Oh, yeah, the trees. Fill everyone in, we got a offer back in April from Wayne Nicely, I think is his name, of Georgia's Hill Road, who wanted to donate twenty-five to thirty hardwood trees for the pastime park. I think I just got kind of lost in the shuffle, and I, you know, I'd like to bring that back up. I contacted Lenny Reel, who offered to, to work with Mr. Nicely on planting the trees for free. They ask is from the village, some stakes to, for support for the trees. Mr. Reel will even water them as they need to get established. I've spoken with Kevin, Kevin thinks we should wait and he should go through the parks committee for, to fall under their master plan. I think if we wait, we will lose this opportunity. Mr. Reel said they need to be planted after the first frost, which could happen at any time. So I'd like to bring that up for...
Is he just wanting to get rid of them this year specifically, or could he, would he be willing to do it this spring, or?
I, I think they're wanting to do it now.
So...
If the question's to me, I mean, the parks committee should meet in the next week, week and a half. And given the fact that we're going through this master plan, I, if we're going to talk about where would we put a restroom, if we were to have funds for a restroom, what, what is the plan for the park? We at least want to make sure we don't plant the trees, and somewhere we would have to just tear them down again. That, that would be my only concern.
I don't think that would cover all thirty of them, though.
Well, no, we're not going to put them all in the same spot.
Okay.
But even one, I mean, or two or three could be in the where we need to grade out a restroom or something like that. I mean, we can accomplish that quickly, I would think. If we can't get it done by the first meeting, I would be shocked. If that's just not just to say these general areas are not in this particular areas where we were reserved for a restroom or something like that, because we were, and we got derailed by other issues, but we were discussing where would we put the new restroom. I don't think putting it where the old one is just automatic, because really, given the location of mostly used ball diamonds, you know, the fields, that restroom was fairly remote. So we are looking at moving the restroom, but we'll make that part of our next meeting and then within two weeks.
Okay. I just would hate to lose this. As Mr. Reel had looked at them, he said they're beautiful, and he, I don't know if you know Lenny Reel, he owns Everett Green Landscaping out on forty-two, he's been here forever. He planted the Christmas tree in By Centennial Park. And I would just hate to lose this opportunity. He said they're really worth seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars a piece.
And some of those could maybe go in, in other locations, not just the park.
Yeah, well, we have multiple parks.
Yeah, right, sure.
Okay, I just don't want to waste a seven hundred and fifty, a thousand dollar, two thousand dollar donation by having to cut it down, you know, a year from now, two years from now when we put the restrooms. I agree, I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth, anyone else wants to put the truth in, but let us make sure we know where we're going to put that building.
Would you please call Mr. Reel and let them know that we're on this, because he's called me a couple times, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We can have an answer by the end of the month, most likely. All right, good. Solicitors contact is on here, and you receive that by email, just that it's time to renew. I saw that Colleen had a question, and we can certainly address that. Any other questions, we can send that back out. We'll send it back out to everybody.
Okay, I haven't heard anything, so, that's the one you sent out today, like four thirty?
There's an awful lot of stuff that came out after mid-morning, and I didn't have access to it.
I mean, your concern was our ability to terminate the contract?
Yeah, this is a, it's a professional services contract.
Yeah, I'd say.
You can terminate it, it's like, when you go to your family physician, you can't tell them, you know, he can't bind you to a three-year contract, it can be terminated at any point.
Yeah, I mean, the way I read it, this doesn't bind us or bind our hands in any way if we wanted to end it. If we came call out today, we could, we could do their part. There have been talks, Paul, there have been talks. Try to please.
Okay. That's all we have on the agenda. So someone else has something? Take a motion.
Yeah.
I got something, Sandy. Last week, I was walking up north, saw a lot of trees that were going to have been, apparently it's...
Falling apart.
I mean, it's, it's going to have to be something done pretty quick.
Well, about two or three weeks ago, Mary Samson, the Union County Building Inspector, was down, and she went through it with Annabelle. They also came over and looked at our building, which I don't know if you saw the side of our building. Colleen and I sit there, and we don't sneeze. So she said she'd get back to us within a week, we have not heard anything, so.
I've heard back from her.
Okay.
Mister, no, not on your, I'm, I'm sorry, were you speaking on your building or?
Both buildings.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were talking about Jason James' building.
Oh, both, both.
And his is going to be progressing soon, hopefully within the next week and a half. I know he's applied for a sidewalk permit to close the sidewalk to get some equipment in there, so I apologize, I thought that's the building you were talking about.
He was working on it this week.
So can we check back, ask Annabelle to call Larry again and regarding it? See what things are there?
And not to belabor, I'm sorry, and not to belabor the point, but just back quickly what Eric was saying. I noticed in the email that they received, what he received from Frontier was they, the cables weren't in violation of utility ordinance. Do we agree with that? If not, I mean, can we figure out, can our zoning individual figure out whether that's true or not? Because it seems as if, if that's not true, that they may be kind of backed into, into doing something. So if we can get an opinion on whether or not those cables are violating some ordinance. Thank you, sorry, I didn't think about that one.
Yes, Eric.
They are low voltage, so they don't fall under National Electric Code rules. National Electric Code would not allow you to put a line that close to an openable window. But since they are low voltage, there is no code that they're violating, so it would only be in your, in the village's zoning. I thought that might be helpful.
Okay. And I found a call that Ice Miller did recommend some new policies and some of that too, so we decided to do that. Great, anything else? Motion? Motion for adjournment, thank you.